Welcome to the Tuolton City Council meeting for October 14, 2024. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance led by Ben Richardson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in which there is all liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start with a few proclamations. Our first one's declaring October 23rd to 31st, 2024 is Red Ribbon Week in the city of Tuolton. Would you mind going through and introducing yourselves?
Hi, I'm Olivia Berg. I'm LEAP's president.
Hi, I'm Bergen. I'm LEAP's vice president.
I'm Kosi. I'm the sophomore representative.
Hi, I'm Nathan. I'm a sophomore and I'm just a member.
Hi, I'm Paul. I'm a freshman member.
I'm Ian. I'm a freshman member.
So, we come to you this week to talk about Red Ribbon Week. So, what is Red Ribbon Week? Well, Red Ribbon Week is a week that celebrates the life of Kiki Camarena. He was an American intelligence officer for the Drug Enforcement Administration. He busted several cartels and in 1985, outside a convenience store after he was retired, he was kidnapped by the Guadalajara cartel and taken to a residence in Colonia, Pardines, de Bolsque, where he was tortured, interrogated, and eventually murdered. Red Ribbon Week promotes what Kiki stood for, a world that is free from drug misuse. So, at Tuolton High School, LEAP Youth Alliance is going to celebrate Red Ribbon Week and promote living substance-free.
So, right now Nathan is passing out some goodie bags that we have, and they were giving them out on our lunch booth day, which is on October 23rd. So, during both lunches, we're going to have these pledges that are their bookmarks, and people can assign them saying they will pledge to live substance-free. And then they can keep them because it's a bookmark, and they're like "life is a movie" themed, which is really cute. And then when you sign the pledge, you will get a goodie bag, and it has candy and then a sheet that has mental health resources slash substance resources, and then statistics about drug use at Tuolton, and just other fun things in general. And then for the whole week, which you saw set up outside, hopefully, we will have our banner, which people can color in.
This year, Red Ribbon Week's theme is "Life is a Movie: Film Drug-Free." To celebrate this, LEAP will host a special screening of Hoco on October 29th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. This event aims to unite our community and foster conversations about drug prevention. Attendees can enjoy candy, snacks, and drinks while they're watching the movie.
On November 1st, during the football game versus Tiger, LEAP will be partnering with Stud to show our unity within the message of drug prevention. At this event, we will be marching with the band and cheer during the pregame while we promote Red Ribbon Week. And we have a banner. Do we have the... Or, yes, we have this poster where kids will write about, "What's your why?" Like, "Why do you eat healthy food? Why do we want to stay safe at the playground?" And then teens and parents or adults will write things like, "Why are you staying substance-free? Why do you choose to stay substance-free?" During the game, LEAP and Stud will have booths on the track by the south end zone, where people can participate in Red Ribbon Week-themed activities, and you can win prizes like candy and... What else?
We have some cool bracelets as well.
Yeah.
We appreciate you for supporting LEAP and hope to see you in future events. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I have the opportunity as the councilperson to get to read the official Red Ribbon Week proclamation, and then I'm hoping that my fellow counselors will take a picture with you. Okay. "City of Tuolton proclamation. Whereas alcohol and other drug use in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, seniors, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Tuolton does hereby proclaim October 23 through 31, 2024 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its residents to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community," introduced and adopted this 14th day of October, 2024. And I would love for you to explain what LEAP Youth Alliance stands for, please.
So, LEAP Youth Alliance stands for Leadership, Education, Advocacy, and Prevention. We are a high school group, so we run out of Tuolton High School, and we focus on teen drug misuse and also mental health advocacy, so that there's more resources out there for people who are struggling with those issues. And, oh, sorry. And also Stud is Tiger's version of that. I don't think that was said earlier, but yeah.
All right. Well, we have a proclamation for you, so I guess I'll hand this to Olivia.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to do a picture? Should that be okay?
Yeah.
Please.
Are we coming to you guys, or are you guys coming to us?
Let's have everybody come around and kind of congregate in this area.
Okay.
Okay, we might need to do some crouching. Exactly. That would be a Halloween-style crouch. Just thinking thriller. Okay, yes. If you could move in a little bit. Then, there we go. Hold still. Perfect. All right.
All right, next, before our next proclamation, do we have Rachel? There she is.
Hi, I'm here. Sorry, I can't be with you in person tonight.
Hi, Rachel. Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Rachel Shutz, and I'm the executive director of the Family Justice Center of Washington County.
And would you like to tell us a little bit about Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Yes. So, I'm here to let you guys know about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which you will be proclaiming tonight, and we're very grateful that you're able to do that. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is very important to us at our organization and our partners, as well as the community. We take great pride that our cities are willing to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, not just for the general awareness of the month and what's going on, but because it's so important to publicly talk about the issues of domestic violence and use your platform as elected officials to notify the community that not only are there resources for them, but that they are safe in the city of Tuolton to talk about their experiences, that there are people that will believe them and hear them, and that there is support when they are ready to reach out. I was speaking with some of our survivors yesterday, and they shared that one of the most difficult parts of domestic violence is even when they know that there's support around them, they still feel so isolated, and they feel like they have to be silent about their experiences. And it's the silence that causes domestic violence to thrive in our community. And so, this year, we're really focusing on breaking the silence so that we can break the cycle of domestic violence. So, you guys taking this time to make this proclamation and do that publicly in front of your city means a lot, and it goes a long way to breaking that silence, so that everybody that lives in Tuolton and everybody that lives in Washington County knows that there are community members that they can turn to, and they can stand up, and they can break their own silence when they are ready.
Thank you so much, Rachel. And now, Counselor Sacco, would you mind reading this proclamation?
Yes, thank you. And with that, those wonderful words, you know, I think this is the fourth year in a row I'm reading this proclamation, and I always volunteer to read this proclamation because I am a domestic violence survivor. And so, it means a lot to me to be able to read this, so thank you.
Thank you for volunteering and for sharing that with us. That means a lot to me, and I'm sure it means a lot to your fellow counselors to hear that.
So, "The City of Tuolton proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities, but often has a disproportionate effect on communities and groups impacted by inequity. And whereas domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial, and digital abuse, and can occur between family members, intimate partners, and within dating relationships. And whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States report having experienced domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, or physical assault by an intimate partner during their lifetimes. And whereas domestic violence impacts vulnerable victims, including children, as approximately 50% of Washington County children who are child abuse victims also live in homes with domestic violence. And whereas in 2023, the Family Justice Center served a total of 5,687 survivors, and the Domestic Violence Resource Center provided 9,518 crisis services to survivors despite challenges due to the pandemic. And whereas domestic violence incidents are some of the most complex and dangerous incidents that law enforcement responds to in our community, putting their lives at risk every day in the belief that coordinated community response is necessary to support survivors, hold offenders accountable, and work towards ending the cycle of violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon. Tuolton designates the month of October, 2024, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent platform to show support for the domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staff, victim service organizations, the prosecutors who hold offenders accountable, and law enforcement officers in our community. It also provides our community the opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy resources, hope, and assistance to victims, introduced and adopted this 14th day of October, 2024."
Thank you so much for reading that. You did a beautiful job, and again, I just really appreciate this, and I'm very heartened for everyone that lives in Tuolton to have such a responsive city council that is willing to stand up and speak out for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And thank you, Counselor Sacco. Next, we have a new employee introduction with Jeriann.
Good evening, Council President Pratt and city counselors. My name's Jeriann Thompson. I am the library director and the Equity and Inclusion Officer for the city, and it's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to our two new full-time library assistants, Tara Stefanik and Linda Garrison. Both Linda and Tara are customer service champions. They truly embrace both the library and city's values of service. As library assistants, Tara and Linda help patrons check out books, sign people up for library cards, and resolve issues with their accounts, among lots of other things. Tara started in her full-time position on July 17th, but she's been working with us as an on-call or temporary library assistant and page since 2022. She also previously worked as an on-call library assistant at Tigerd Public Library. Prior to libraries, her background was in information systems management, and she also has a doctorate in naturopathic medicine. Tara enjoys the balance in her job between helping community members and maintaining organization in the library, and that's something that we take very seriously. She says that she loves feeling that she is helping to contribute positively to people's lives through her work. Linda started with us on August 6th. She recently moved to this area to be closer to her daughter. She hails from Boise, Idaho, where she worked for 11 years at their main library. Her most recent position there was senior circulation specialist. Linda also gets a lot of joy from working in libraries and said that she feels it's a privilege to help people connect with the information they're looking for. They've both made great additions to our team. I'm sure when you come in the library, you'll see their smiling faces welcoming you, and it's a pleasure to be able to introduce them to you tonight.
Welcome to Tuolton. Would either of you like to tell us about your experience so far in Tuolton?
Whenever I tell somebody about my job, my family, my friends, I tell them that this is the first place I've worked where I can fully be myself and feel like a valued and valuable member of the team. In the past, I've always had jobs where I felt like, "Oh, okay, now I have to pretend to be this person, I have to aspire to be this person before I can really fit here." But I can just be myself, and all the people I work with are so supportive and so kind. It's a very cozy environment, and I just, I really love it.
No pressure.
Follow that up.
No, I'm just very happy to be working for Tuolton, and also, everyone has just been so kind. It's just been amazing to be here. It really is truly a very special place to work.
It's wonderful to hear you say that that's how you feel working there internally, because I feel like our library is, we get such good responses in our library and how welcoming a place it is for our community, so we're glad to have you both.
And you hear so much about the challenges that people working in libraries and people inhabiting libraries are experiencing, and our community has not been like that at all for me. We have so little of that conflict, and so I feel like we both, the people that work there and the people that come there, just make up this wonderful place to be.
I completely agree.
Well, thank you so much, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have public comments. Is there anybody online? Okay. So, I know I've got Ben Richardson and a couple other people that might be veterans. Mr. Schaubert. Hi, Ben. Do you mind introducing yourself and then letting us know what branch of service you've served under?
Okay. Yeah, Ben Richardson. I served in the United States Navy, and I'm here actually on behalf of Dale Potts, who I know most of you know. All of you probably know Dale. I call him Mr. Tuolton. He, I just a side note, and this is, he provided the script because I'm here on his behalf, but I just want to say about Dale, I don't know if you know his rank in the military when he served in the Navy, but he was a full-bird captain, and that's a rank that can lead an aircraft carrier. So, that's 6,000 guys on a, men and women on a aircraft carrier. So, it's a pretty significant rank. He is all about veterans, and so we are, he can't be here because he's on bedrest for a recent medical issue, but tonight, we want to promote our city's Veteran Appreciation Breakfast. And so, we ask your assistants and all those in the audience and those watching TV to share this information with veterans you know. The breakfast is being held at the Juanita Poll Center on Friday, November 8 at 9:00 a.m. You might want to get there a couple minutes early. We all have a great time there with our fellow veterans. In addition to interesting speakers, there are door prizes. And I talked to Marilyn at the Poll Center today, and she, they're working on a grand prize for one of the raffles, so it looks to be pretty good. Veterans are free, but it's $12 for each guest. So, to register, call the number on the screen. You can't see it, I'll read it to you. And we have some veterans here that sometimes come to our coffee. We have a coffee veterans group that meets on Wednesdays here in Tuolton, and I'm going to let them stand up and say their name, if that's okay, and what branch of the service.
Lynn Schaubert, Air Force.
Rocky Bixby, Marines, and National Guard.
Awesome. That's all I have. Thank you for letting us promote this, and if you have any questions or comments before we salute and leave.
It's always a good breakfast.
It is always good breakfast and great company and great stories. That's my favorite part. Counselor Brooks?
I just want to encourage everyone to come too. It's one of my favorite events that we do in the city. I appreciate all of your, all of you guys championing this event, and of course, your service, and I would look forward to seeing everybody there. And the prizes are really good.
The food is great, and if veterans out there haven't ever attended, it'll be worth your while to come. It's really great. They do a great job putting this on for us, so it's much appreciated.
All right. To register is the phone number.
Yes, register, you can go to the, you can call the Poll Center directly, or register by the number on the flyer. Yeah.
And do you want to talk about the signs? Is this the one we do the signs for? The recognition signs in the, oh, Memorial Day? Okay.
That's above my pay grade. I don't know.
Well, thank you, Ben and Rocky and Lynn.
All right. Thank you.
You're on the wrong thing. Okay.
I think we did that during COVID, when we couldn't do the breakfast. We did those signs.
We did the signs during COVID.
We put yard signs in veterans' yards.
Yeah.
But I...
We haven't done that since COVID.
I saw somebody with their sign in their yard the other day, and I thought, "So proud." Yeah. Let's let Ross give us a little update there.
Hi, Counselor. Ross Hoover, Director of Parks Recreation. Sherilyn's correct. That was started during COVID. We wanted to ensure that veterans were recognized, especially this time of year when we usually have this breakfast, and so the signs were launched, and we have continued that program. And so, if you haven't seen signs out and about, you will soon. And so, yeah, you will, you'll see those out and about.
Oh, great. Thank you, Ross.
And then, can I, if Counselor Brooks... Thank you, sorry. If somebody, I thought I was going to roll the door. If somebody needs a sign or wants a sign, then they, how do they get one?
Please contact the Poll Center, and the Poll Center can help you with that.
Thank you. All right. Is that it? Oh, Counselor Sacco?
I have a quick question. So, just because Veterans Day is coming up, and the bricks for the Veterans Plaza, and I know that the deadline was October 20-something? But is there, I don't know if there's any opportunity to...
Yes, I believe that we will be extending that through the breakfast, and absolutely yes. So, the new Veterans Plaza has the main entry space, are bricks that are all individually dedicated, or will be individually dedicated. And so, this first phase at the grand opening that we will have in place, ready to go for that ribbon-cutting and event on Memorial Day, that first phase is right now, is open. Subsequent years, we will have a period of where people can submit and purchase a brick on into the future until that entire entryway is filled with personal dedications, so.
So, don't go anywhere. Sorry. So, if someone would want to purchase a brick for someone, how would they go about doing that?
So, you can contact the Poll Center. You can go into the Poll Center. You can send an email, and they will send you the form, or get you the form. And that form, it's a very simple form that you fill out. We have three lines that can be dedicated, and there is a fee, there's a $150 fee, and there's no profit there. That is purely for the cost of the brick and the engraving and the installation, and so that's the price we will keep it at, is whatever that cost is for the actual cost to make that happen.
What a great addition to the plaza. Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
Okay. It doesn't look like we have anybody left in the audience, so I think we'll move on. Okay, next, we have Consent Agenda. Is there anyone that wants to remove any item on the Consent Agenda today? We have three items. All right, and I'll go through and read them. First, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September 23, 2024. Second, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Little Borough PDX LLC. And finally, consideration of resolution number 5813-24, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation, otherwise known as DLCD, to provide the city with consultant assistance for walkable design standards code amendments. Does anybody have any thing that they want to discuss on this? How about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Next, we're going to get an update from Chief Pickering about the Police Department.
Well, good evening, council. Again, I am Chief Greg Pickering, the Tuolton Police Department, and I am here to provide you with an update of the ongoings of the Police Department. So, to just to start off with the current staffing levels of the Police Department, we're currently at 39 sworn. We have one of those who is currently at the Police Academy, who will graduate in December. We have one who just graduated two weeks ago in his first phase of field training, and we do have one officer who was on light duty from an on-duty injury, which required surgery, so he's on an extended, on the-job injury status. Our eight non-sworn personnel positions are full, and they do a great job of the support for the Police Department. We do have two current vacancies, so we do have one officer position that's vacant, and the current, currently have one sergeant position that's vacancy. So, we are actively in the hiring process. With that, we do have one officer, or one applicant who is in the background phase, who's almost done with that, and we do, we did interview five lateral candidates last week, and we have one of those candidates who will be moving on in the process. And so, that, that person is a certified officer already, who is working in a police agency locally in the metro area and is looking to change their venue, so we're excited for that. Just currently what our organization chart looks like right now, so you do see the two officers in training up top in the lighter green. Officer Pfaff is in the lighter blue. She was also on the job injury status, but she was released to full duty as of Saturday and is back to full duty. And Officer Fisher is the one that's on our OJI, and we do have a, so the vacant officer position you see is currently in detectives right now, and then the vacant sergeant position. So, some updates of some exciting things that we have coming up in the future. So, through the budget process, we did have an ad package to add two drones. Those drones have been purchased, and we are waiting for them to arrive, and so we're excited for those two drones. So, the DJI Avata is a smaller drone. These are actual pictures of the drones that we've purchased. So, the smaller drone is designed for indoor flight, so we can use it to fly into buildings, we can use it to fly into homes. This is a tactic being used around the country now for entry... This is a tactic being used around the country now for entries and those type of things, just to make it safer for officers. The technology is incredible. They have two-way communications now with lights and infrared capabilities. It's pretty impressive. The DJI M30 Enterprise Drone is what you would see. It's a much larger drone designed for outdoor flight. These, the new technology with the drones, these things pretty much fly themselves. They're pretty, pretty incredible what they will do. Again, they have capability of lights, they have, these, the, the bigger drones don't have the two-way communications, but they do have the ability for us to use a speaker and talk, and they do have the infrared capability for us to see at night. All of these drones also have live monitoring, so we can actually log in and watch the incidents as they occur from a command post or from a patrol vehicle. It's a very, it's, it's very, it's a very cool thing to watch, so. We had, have selected four drone pilots, and each of those pilots have to be certified through the FAA with a Part 107A pilot's license. So it's an unmanned vehicle pilot's license, so they all have to go through the same criteria and pass a test through the FAA to be a pilot. So we're excited for those to come onboard very soon, so. As you guys are all aware, we have recently brought on a new K-9 recruit. His name is K-9 Boone. So K-9 Boone is a 19-month-old German Shepherd. His handler has been selected as Officer Eli Foltz, and that's the two of them there out getting to know each other. They will start patrol school at the end of this month, October 27th, and that's an eight-week school that he'll attend every day for eight weeks to learn how to, to do the job as a K-9 patrol officer. And so we're very excited to get that team up and running and get them out in the community. I will tell you that Boone is, you see him look there, he looks, you know, he has probably, he has a giant head. It's incredible. He has a very small body and a big head. Hopefully, he'll grow into that a little bit, but he's, he is, he, he has the, you know, he will be representative of what the Tuolton Police Department is. We're very excited for him to be here, so. Yes. So just some, this is just a snapshot of some of the activity for the Police Department. So this is a snapshot from September 1st of 2023 to September 1st, 2024. So officers in the Tuolton Police Department serviced 3, 23,415 calls for service. 13,000 of those were dispatched calls, and 10,000, a little over 10,000 were self-initiated activities, which include traffic stops, pedestrian stops, what we call community contacts, so any time that they just stop and talk to somebody in a, in a non-investigative manner, all of those are tracked in all of the, the things that they do on a daily basis. There was a little over, a little shy of 5,000 traffic stops for violations. And one thing I can say that I'm, I'm really proud of our officers is if you notice that they've actually issued more warnings than they've issued citations. So they take this very seriously, the education through enforcement, so it's not all about just getting out and writing a citation. It's actually about doing our best to make sure that our motoring public is being safe. And through that time, there was a little over 5,000 reports that were prepared by the officers for all of these incidents, because everything that we do is documented in one form or another. So those reports, what do those look like? As you can see, 27,000, 2,700 of those, excuse me, were incident or offense reports. So those are actually reports of crimes that have occurred for one measure of another. The field contact reports would be somebody where you stop and talk to them on the street, trying to identify who they are. Maybe they were in the area of a crime, maybe they were a witness, but we want that information to be documented through our report management system, so that, that would be a field contact report. A supplemental report would be on those initial incident reports that were taken, so that's might be a follow-up investigation or a case clearance or that type of a situation. You notice there was 314 missing person reports. And so those aren't all people that have, that are missing truly. Most of those are runaway juveniles or people who were reported as missing that we have located, so. 31, sorry. 300, my colors are wrong. Yeah. Mine's in black and white, so that's, yeah. And then you can see the accident reports and arrest reports that we have through there, so. So use of force. So this is, again, one of the things that we want to make sure that we're being super transparent about when it comes to our use of force through our daily activities. So these are statistic reports for the year-to-date from January 1st of this year to October 1st of this year. So as of, as of right now, there's been 34 incidents that have involved use of force, so 34 uses of force by officers. So each use of force that is documented through an officer is then goes through an internal process where there's five different steps of approval. So it's not just something where an officer writes a report and ships it off through. That report is entered into a database that we have that we track several different aspects of that use of force itself. The initial report itself is approved by a supervisor or a sergeant and then forwarded to the captain. The captain of the Patrol Division is the first one to review it, and then we send that back to what we call our disciplined lead. So if it's a firearm-related incident, it goes back to our lead firearms instructor. If it was a control hold that we used on a person, it goes back to our lead defensive tactic instructor. And they look at it through our protocols and through our training to make sure that it falls within our training and protocols. After he approves, he or she approves that, it then is moved to the other captain, so it gets another review at the, at the mid-management level, and finally comes to my desk where I give the final approval and check those off. So the five different people will look at each one of those incidents to make sure that we're following policy, we're following law, and that we're following our procedures when it comes to the use of force. So I apologize for these graphs. They're pretty small and hard to read, but these are the statistics that come directly from the database that we use to track all of our incidents that occur. So as you can see, most of these are for felony-type of incidents, high-risk stops, escape or elude, so that would be somebody running either in a vehicle or in a car. Domestic disturbance, where we have to restrain a person using force. Behavioral health, BHI is a behavioral health incident, so we have a person that is in crisis to the point that we have to use some type of, of force. And typically, those forces that we use in those situations are controlled and are what we call our wrap restraint system, which is to safely take them into custody to transport them to get help. Other disturbances, and then misdemeanor incidents, arrests, or unknown traffic stops or, or stop incidents. The reason for the defensive action, as you can see, 75% of those were to make an arrest, and then some to prevent escape. And the civil custody for POC, which is the police officer custody, again, the BHI or behavioral health incident. And then there was four incidents where the officer had to use it to defend themselves. This is a breakdown of the race of the, the individuals who force was used against. As you see, that these statistics actually fall pretty well in line with our demographics here of the city. So again, we, this is something that we monitor very closely to make sure that there isn't disparities in any of these incidents as they're going. This also follows along with our stop data, that when it comes to our traffic stops, we, where we track all of the data from our traffic stops to make sure that it is also in line with our demographic, and we're, we're not finding that we're being disparaging against one, one group or another. The type of force that we use, I do want to call this to attention, if you notice, the, the top two are display, so firearms display or taser display. So anytime that an officer draws a pistol out of a holster or pulls a taser out of a holster, we document those as a use of force, even though there may not be a force that was applied to an individual during the incident. We believe that that actual display of force is, could be construed as a use of force, and we look at it as what does the public see? So if the public sees two officers standing there with their guns drawn, that again is an application of what we would be determined as force, and so we document that as such. And you'll also notice later down, so that's the vast majority of our use of force, is display of force only, actual no force being, being used. And then the, the next largest one, again, is our wrap restraint system. So that's the, the safe way to transport somebody who is combative, so they're not kicking or thrashing around in the back of a patrol car when we have to transport them. So this statistic is something that I'm very proud of. 100% of those have made it through our process and found to be justified. That means they're within law, they're within practice, and they're within policy. So again, that's something that we, we take hold very near and dear. Again, this is just, this is something that we glaze over the top. Each one of these incidents go through a five-step process to make sure that they are within policy, they are within procedure, they are within practice. I can tell you that two years ago, we had one that did not meet our policy. We immediately moved through, were able to provide training, and then again, moved to a direction where we want to make sure that we're, this is 100% every single year. So this is a snapshot of 2023, of a complete year of what that looks like. So you see in 2023, so this is the number of events that we dealt with as a Police Department, and then the top one is the, is the number of uses of force that came out of that. So the 22,378 events resulted in 57 uses of force, which you see is about a quarter of a percent. So that, that roughly means a quarter of the percent of the time that an officer's on scene, they're having to use force for one reason or another. And the second box down is our arrests. So using force during the application of arrest, you see there was 653 arrests in 2023, again, 57 use-of-force incidents, less than 10% of those resulted in the use of force when we were effecting an arrest of someone here in Tuolton. In comparison, 2022, we had 69 uses of force with 22,872, so that top number is actually .3, so it's a little bit higher, and our arrest number was 9.46. Comparatively in '21, 69 events, 22,673 incidents. Again, that was .3 of our response incidents resulted in the use of force, and it was 9.6% of our arrests in 2021. So if you could rework that in reverse, 2021, it was 9.6, 2022, 9.4, and last year, 8.7. So actually, we're seeing a reduction in uses of force with officers across this, across the, the city, so. With that, I will entertain any questions. That was kind of a high-level overview, kind of quickly, but good information that, again, we, we pledged back in 2020 that we'd bring to Council and, and be transparent on a yearly basis, so.
Any questions? Counselor Brooks?
Well, I have two, I think. So one, is the police doc gonna be on patrol?
He is.
He is now?
Not yet. Well, he, he's in the car, he getting used to riding around in the car, but he actually's not being deployed until he completes school, which will be towards the December.
December?
Yep.
Okay. And then my other question was, do we already have drones?
We don't. These will be our first two drones that we've had here in Tuolton.
Okay. That's interesting, because I, remember when all the lights went out, because some transformer blew or something like that? There's some drone that was hovering around my house, and I didn't know if that was official, unofficial. It was kind of weird.
Yeah.
And everyone was like, what's that? You know? Because it brings us out.
Actually, the, some of the technology that comes along with the drone is, is a set of software that will allow us to log in and see any drone that's flying in the area.
Oh, that's good.
And so it gives us the ability to see if that's something nefarious or something legitimate.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, thank you so much, and congratulations on the improvement on your statistics. That's wonderful news.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just only had one question. Do you think that potentially the ride-along with the behavioral health person has had any impact on decreasing that percentage?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's, it's, the, the addition of adding, you know, a master's-level clinician to our behavioral health response has shown to be invaluable across the county. It's a program that I think, you know, we've said before, and I know that the Council has expressed an interest in growing that, you know, that, in, in the future, but absolutely having somebody there, you know, she does wear a uniform that looks somewhat like a police, she does wear a vest, but it says counselor, it says, I mean, it's, it's very clearly marked that, it says clinician, I believe is what it says. Clinician, she's not armed. The, our clinician that works here stays in, in this area, the Tiger, Tuolton, Sherwood area, King City. Our clients in the area are getting to know her, and she does a lot, not, she doesn't just respond when she's working, she does a ton of work after the fact of follow-ups, making phone calls, reaching out to the clients, and doing their best. The, the addition of her being able to access the medical side that we don't have access to is huge, because she's able to actually triage some of the calls prior to us getting there, which has changed our response in some ways.
That's fascinating, thank you. And do you think it's impacted the recidivism, then?
Why, absolutely, because I think, you know, our, as been said before, the behavioral health system in Oregon is not the best, and so having kind of a expressway to get someone into treatment or into help is, has been, has, has been huge, yeah.
All right. Counselor Brooks has another question?
Thanks, talking about this, I did think about this. When you have somebody that's dealing with behavioral health issues, is, are there, are there more likely places that they're referred to or if they have to go into care?
So as a police officer, if I respond to a behavioral health call and I deem the person to be a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or unable to care for themselves, I have the ability under Oregon law to take them into, under the Community Caretaker Act, to take them on a police officer custody. That police officer custody requires me to take them to the closest hospital, so my only option is to take them to Meridian Park.
Okay.
So we deal with, if Meridian Park's on divert, if Meridian Park is full, if Meridian Park isn't, doesn't, they have one psychiatric bed in their emergency room, if they're not, if that's full, because the closest hospital for Tuolton is also the, the closest hospital for Tigerd, for West Lynn, for Canby. So we're, we're competing for that one bed for many, you know, depending on who that might be. The clinician has the ability to step outside of what they, of that, what they call dispersal plan. So she has the ability to make phone calls and get potentially somebody into a residential treatment facility rather than going directly to a hospital, because she has the ability to use a director's hold and other avenues that we don't have as police officers. So it's really broadened the ability for us to get people into care quicker.
Is, do we have a record of where they get referred to from her?
We don't.
Okay.
She might, but because that's a medical side at that point, we don't keep any of those things because of HIPAA.
I'm just curious, like, best, you know, like, I think it would be interesting if she had a list that worked well for her.
Yeah, and, and they do. Again, she works for Life, she's a contract employee through Life Works Northwest, so she's actually a contract employee to Washington County, you know, and I'll give you the example of Unity Hospital in Portland, which is a mental health hospital only. They actually, their protocol is law enforcement's not allowed to respond there. So we wouldn't have the ability to take somebody there if we needed to on a POC or on a director's hold. We actually would have to have them transported by ambulance. She's able to work that, to be, to make that transport happen much faster than we could on our side. So it's, it's proved to be very invaluable for us.
Thank you. Okay, so my question is, with the use of force at 8.73%, it sounds amazing, but do you have something to compare it to, like other communities? Like, it seems amazing to me, but.
Yeah, you know, I don't. I, I don't know, you know, other than going and researching how they would attract their own, there's, you know, our numbers are our numbers, and we track our numbers and what we look at. As far as what other agencies are doing, I don't know how they are tracking.
Okay.
It's only been the last couple of years that we've been required to report certain things to the state. We've been tracking these numbers since the 90s, so we've, we've been, we've been constantly trying to monitor these things. We're on our third different database, and so I, I can, I, I don't know how Tigerd or Sherwood or Washington County tracks their information.
I just kind of wondered, because I thought it might look even better. Anyway, well, thank you, and it's, it's really good to hear that our police force really works hard to diffuse situations and, and see these numbers go down.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we're on to general business, so we will have Kevin come up and talk about Resolution Number 5812-24.
Thank you, Council President, members of Council. This is your third look at proposed Council Rule amendments that were forwarded by your Council Rule Subcommittee back on May 17th, 2024. If you recall, the Council has had a chance to substantively review these proposed revisions. They did this back on June 24th and August 26th of this year. And so you have seen all these proposed revisions. It starts on page 113 of the Agenda Packet. But on August 26th, 2024, there was another requested revision to the rules that was in regards to attendance of meetings for members of Council, and specifically Rule 2H2. The Council has not had a chance to review that rule in a Council meeting, but what I have done based on the comments that I received on August 26th, I've prepared a draft revision, and I believe the, the requested revision had to do with ensuring that a member of Council that was assigned to a committee gave reasonable notification to a, a Council alternate in the case that they could not attend that committee meeting. And so this is the wording that I have come up with for your review. And essentially, what it does, it requires a reasonable notification to that Council alternate, and if failure to do so, not only could result in the enforcement consequence set out in Rule 10, but also removal, potentially, if repeated violations occur for, for that counselor who continually violates the revised rule from their assigned committee or committees. And Council President, with that, since we've already had two reviews of the other rules, again, the other rules had to do with basically council decorum, the travel policy, council communications, and mandatory ethics and council rules training in addition to the state-mandated public meetings law training that had gone into effect October 1. And that's all I have, and I will just open it up for council questions.
Any questions on this change or prior changes? All right, and then we can move to a resolution if someone would like to make a motion?
And that's correct. And I will just, for the council's benefit, if the resolution is adopted, these rules, per council rule, go into effect at your next council meeting.
Okay. And then I have a question on this, because one of the rules, not this one, is about education for us through you.
Correct.
So will people be notified, like, after the first of the year? Will you contact them, or will that be coordinated through the city?
I'll certainly let Cheryl speak, but we will coordinate together to ensure that all of the council at the beginning of next year receive all of their required training, whether that be required by the state or these council rules.
Yeah, okay. That's much appreciated, because I think most of us are pretty busy people and don't want to just forget it inadvertently, so.
Yeah, we'll coordinate on it, but I imagine, I can envision doing a, maybe an off council meeting workshop where Kevin goes through a training such, like Chad did that with Barry Elsner, Sean did that before. So it's usually at the first of the year, on, at the first of the term.
Great, we just start the year with a good reminder, so. Okay, so we're back to, any discussion on this resolution?
A quick question. This was regarding attendance, right?
Yes.
So, okay.
That's correct, councilor.
Not the other.
So I'll make a motion to, do we just adopt? A motion to adopt Resolution Number 5812-24, amending the City of Tuolton council rules, including the changes presented tonight.
Second? Do we need to do a voice call?
This is roll call.
Roll call. Okay, I'll start with Councilor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilor Brooks?
Aye.
Councilor Sacco?
Aye.
Councilor Billier?
Aye.
Councilor Perez?
Yes.
And I vote aye also.
Thank you very much.
All right, and our last speaker for the evening is... I said our last, we saved the best for last.
I wonder what this floating meeting controls is? I was intrigued by that. Hello, Council, Council President Pratt and members of the City Council. I'm Cheryl Lambo, I'm city manager here, and I am excited to be in front of you tonight to talk about the Climate Action Plan and moving it forward from adoption to the next step. So let's get started. Oh, hmm.
I thought that there was a, one that took me through, it had transitions. Could you pull that up? That would be great. So I will talk through this. Do you need me to send it to you separately? Okay. So the first bullet point here is that the, a couple of reminders, that the Climate Action Plan was adopted in May of this year, a momentous occasion where a lot of work had gone into this. The Climate Action Plan, I printed it out, or I had Erica print it out for me, and this is without the exhibits, so it's essentially like 159 pages without the exhibits, and with the exhibits, it's just under 400 pages. And it's full of a lot of good stuff, as you know. On page six of the executive summary, I just wanted to call out and read it. "The plan was created over the course of two years. The process was guided by the following principles: science-based approach, equitable outcomes, identifying community benefits, and utilizing partnerships. The plan is based on local data, scientific modeling and forecasts, and input from the community stakeholder groups and experts." The, there was a bit of the slide that shows, and hopefully we can get it up, but there were, there are four sections of the plan, seven focus areas, 28 strategies, and 146 actions. So a significant, a significant work, a document of an effort. Also, as a reminder, you, as a part of the budget process, you put funds in this year's budget for two things. I'm sorry, like, okay, I'm sorry. Do what? Oh, it's, it's okay. So you put funds in this year's budget for two things. First, Action 8.1.12 of the Climate Action Plan is to hire a firm to help us put together a five-year implementation plan. Let's see if this, okay, I'm gonna see if I can, oh, yes, okay. There are the four sections and what we just talked about. So you added $125,000 to the 2425 budget as a placeholder for two actions. The first, there we go. So the first is to hire a firm to facilitate prioritization and development of the five-year implementation plan. And as I was just referencing, there's an action in the next steps section, so 8.1.12, which is to create a five-year work plan. So that follows with that. And we'll talk more about this in a minute. Secondly, to hire a firm to analyze and provide options for a sustainable funding strategy. So again, there's an action 8.1.11 that is to identify an ongoing funding source. And so that, that matches with that. And again, we will talk about it in a second. More recap, Climate Action Plan, I thought that was clever, sorry. The Climate Action Plan is divided into seven focus areas. The top, where it says Section 2, the focus areas 1 to 3 are adaptation-related. So there are nine strategies and 59 actions that are meant to help Tuolton prepare for and adapt to climate changes. And then focus areas 4 through 7 are mitigation-related. So there are 19 strategies and 87 actions that are meant to help Tuolton reduce community-wide emissions to net zero by 2050. So moving the cap forward, after the council adoption, I convened an interdepartmental group of folks, and that included many people that are in the room tonight, Ross representing Parks, Ross Hoover, Kim and, Kim McMillan and Steve Koper from Community Development, Rachel Sykes and Nick Westendorf from Public Works, Megan George from the, from Admin from my office. And the, the reason I convened this group was that there is a real need to create organizational ownership internally. And so when the Climate Action Plan was being produced and created, it was a big effort, and once it got adopted, there's just a need to bring the organization together to become familiar with the doc, with the plan, understand what actions are already in place, and then discuss really what is realistic to take on until additional capacity can be added. Getting buy-in and ownership is extremely valuable in the organization as we move forward this Titanic effort. Currently, we do not have a full-time staff assigned to this. The capacity that we have right now is made up of existing folks in the organization, including myself. We also understand that we can't just look at low-hanging fruit. We need to have actions on the work plan that are high-impact, but also take advantage of things that are happening, leverage, leverage things that are already in place, like the grant funding that we're getting and other, our capital improvement plan, that, actions that are coming up on that. I will talk more about the high-impact actions in a second, but those are signified by a red star. Ultimately, this interdepartmental group recommends a shorter-term, two-year Kickstarter work plan. The recommendation is to switch the sequence of the two budget items that I talked about to start with hiring a firm to identify ongoing funding that can fund the program, including a staff position. And then secondly, that staff person will give us capacity to work with a consultant to develop a longer-term prioritized plan, leveraging off of the work that has already been started. So to talk about the high-impact actions, with the development of the Climate Action Plan, Good Company, who was the firm that we used to develop the Climate Action Plan, put together a priority action list of the top 10 actions that, and strategies that have the highest emissions reductions potential. So there's 10 actions throughout the, throughout the document that relate to our top three emission sources, which are building energy, goods production, and transportation energy. So we have included a number, well, four, of those high-impact actions into this work plan that we're recommending, and those will be identified by this red star. So before I get to placing it on the two-year timeframe, I wanted to talk through the, some categories of the actions. So first, we talked about identifying an ongoing funding source. So the two actions under this are to conduct an analysis of options. We are working with Eco Northwest, scoping a funding analysis where they will look at what options are available to fund a long range, to have a sustainable funding source that could pay for a staff resource, also to pay for consultants that were, are needed, or one, actions that don't have, like, grant opportunity available to them. After that analysis, we expect that analysis will be in front of council in February or March, and then depending on what your direction is, following up on that analysis, we would implement that sustainable funding source with the hope of hiring a staff person with that funding to oversee and manage the program sometime next summer. I would be remiss if we did not talk about the CFI grant. So this is the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant that was just announced, $15 million, so impactful, and it is a huge lift. But it's really exciting that we're able to take it on right now at the start of our Climate Action Plan that just leverages so much. It directly relates to five actions, two of them in the top 10. So I'll just talk through these really quickly. 6.1.2 is promoting programs to help fund installation of EV chargers at new and existing affordable housing and multifamily community complexes. That is, that is exactly what the, the grant identifies, and it's very exciting to be able to, and that is a top 10 action that has a lot of potential to reduce emissions. Secondly, increase the number of events promoting electric vehicles, also very much part of the grant, and this is very programmatic. I don't know exactly what it will look like, but we anticipate a number of events, not just promoting electric vehicles, but more enhancing knowledge and information about fuel switching to electricity. Installing publicly accessible community EV chargers in Tuolton, of course, that's, that's what the grant is all about. Conducting an electric car share pilot program at low-income or high-equity needs residential areas in Tuolton, this was an example in the grant, so that's an exciting item that will be worked on as a part of the grant that's in the Climate Action Plan. And finally, developing policies and priorities around installation of publicly accessible charging stations in the right-of-way. So PGE, we're exploring with PGE right now, a program, like, a grant program or, that would be a little bit of a pilot. We anticipate this to be further out in, in this two-year timeframe, but certainly something that we, is in the plan and we can put on the work plan. Some other recommended actions besides the CFI grant and the, the development of a sustainable funding source. So in the mitigation, the, not mitigation, the, let's see, the adaptation section, we've identified that we can take this on in parks as a leverage to the design, the design of the Riverfront Park. So we're bringing on a consultant in the spring to look at the design of the Riverfront Park that we just purchased next to the Pole Center. And so this action is to create park design standards to increase shade cover, shelter, increase the availability of drinking water fountains and water features in city parks. So we're, we believe that we're going to be able to nest this into that, to that, that project, the design of the, the Riverfront Park, and tackle this action. Secondly, establish a citywide water conservation program. You heard about that tonight with Jake presenting information. We'll take your direction and, and be back in front of you with a, those benchmarks and that we, that you talked about earlier. Participate in Soul Smart, Soul Smart Program. So Soul Smart is a free program that provides technical assistance to local governments to reduce barriers for installing solar in our communities. And it's a free program that we believe that we can sign up for and, in, in this two-year timeframe, and it's, it's also one of the top 10 action items as it enhances solar, bringing solar to residential and commercial in our community. Reduce barriers to compact urban development in the downtown area and the town, town center. So this is directly related to our Cora, the urban renewal downtown area, and it's an action that will be tackled as soon as we're able to, when, when we begin work on the Cora, which is projected to be next year. And finally, update Tuolton's approved street tree list with climate, I can't read that, climate-adapted and/or drought-resistant tree options to better withstand climate change. This, you heard from Ross Hoover and Rachel Sykes a couple of meetings ago about, about trees, and we're taking that direction, and this will be a part of, of that work effort. In addition to those, we have some actions that we're looking to take on here at the City of Tuolton that can be used as proof of concept when they are rolled out to the community. So enroll in the Strategic Energy Management Program. So this is underway. We enrolled in this SIM program with Energy Trust of Oregon, and we're looking at things that we can do here at the city to change behaviors and to save energy, and then we can roll that out in the community and it'd be something that other businesses in the community can take advantage of. Enroll in PGE's Green Futures Program. So this is also a red starred, although no, we're not counting that as, as a red-starred program in the work plan, because we're only taking it on at the City of Tuolton. If we were to roll that out, if you, if you, the council decided to roll this out in the community, then, then it, we could include it as a, as a red star, as a high-impact item. But for now, it's a But for now, it's a proof of concept. We're enrolling right now in the Green Futures Program through PGE. And then finally, update Public Works Construction Code to require low-emission concrete and asphalt materials. So as we're putting together the 25 pavement management program, we are looking to to test this out, to use low-emission concrete and asphalt materials, and depending on how that works, we can bring it back and look at changing the the Public Works Construction Code to account for that. So to put it on the timeline, the 8.1.11, identify ongoing funding sources. We are scoping it right now, anticipate being under contract with Eco Northwest right away, and having something in front of the council in winter, so February, hopefully February, and have something in place July of '25. The CFI, this is a little variable, the the actions associated with CFI. We're working right now to get the grant documents all in place, and thankfully, there is money to hire a person that comes along with that. This is a huge lift, and it's taking up a lot of Nick's time. Probably, he is 120% off allocated right now, maybe more, and is working a lot on on this, as well as our finance department and others are working through this. But we anticipate this going for certainly more than the two years, but over, I believe it's a five-year, we're supposed to have it spent in five years. Enrolling in this, the SIM program, that's happening right now. Enrolling in PGE's Green Future Choice Program, that's happening in this fiscal year. Updating the Public Works Construction Code for the alternative low-emission concrete and asphalt materials, that will be for the the pavement management program in '25. Creating the park design standards, that will is on tap for spring of '25. The establish the citywide, the water conservation program, that we anticipate that being well underway this time next year, certainly. Participating in Soul Smart, we are exploring that now and believe that we can have that in place in summer of '25. And then update Tuolatin's, the street tree list, that is in spring of '26, potentially, potentially before. And then finally, reduce barriers to compact urban development. That's with the urban renewal area. So we expect that the Cora concept planning and work will be underway in summer of '26, for sure. So that fills out the two-year work program. There are a number of actions in the plan that are already underway or by their nature are ongoing. Of course, we anticipate over time the actions will be completed, and then new ones will be added and milestones achieved. But we thought that walking through the in-progress and ongoing ones, at least tonight, as we're talking about launching these, this work, would be useful. I don't know if it will be in the updates coming forward, but. So for now, the focus area one, natural system resources and infrastructure, has a number of in-progress, ongoing actions. So continue partnering with the Regional Water Providers Consortium to share education and resources related to water conservation. Talked about that to the Regional Water Providers Consortium tonight under Council Communications. That is continuing. Advocate with Clean Water Services to update their stormwater treatment facility species list. So this is in progress. We are working with Clean Water Services, and they are working on that list. I don't know when it'll be adopted, but this is in progress as well. Develop parking lot design standards that result in cooler shaded lots and prevent flooding risks. So this is in process right now with community development associated with our climate-friendly equitable communities work. And yes, so community development is working on that. Work with Trimet and Ride Connection to increase shelter at bus stops. So several of you have been active in this. We just got Trimet to increase shelter at a stop over by Edfaldy Park that I think Counselor Pratt was involved in, and the mayor were asking Trimet to work on that. Corridor, oh, consider constructing large regional stormwater management facilities to increase stormwater management capacity. This is in progress, especially in Basalt Creek, when we talked about the Basalt Creek Stormwater Master Plan and the hydro modification requirements. So Clean Water Services is in progress on on this. In our focus area two, health and safety, share information about available shelters in anticipation of and during extreme weather events. So we work with Washington County and Clackamas County on notification of shelters, whether that's cooling shelters, heating shelters, and during extreme events. Share emergency preparedness resources and free, easy-to-access kits available in English and Spanish. You just heard a couple of meetings ago from CERT, they and Neighborhood Ready, that they are, they are working on this. They just had that fair, and they have kits available. So this is ongoing and in progress. Oh, this was a duplicate on. Focus area five, urban forum and land use. So continue to partner with Friends of Trees to plant trees in Tuolatin. We've been partnering with Friends of Trees for 25 years, planted, I believe, over a million trees over that 25 years, and that will just continue in place. And it's a wonderful volunteer program that just has made a difference in the the shade corridor of the Tuolatin River. Focus area six, transportation. There's a number of in-progress, ongoing items, including a high, a top 10 item, establish parking and charging infrastructure requirements for electric vehicles at new development. This is actually complete. This was also part of the climate-friendly equitable communities work that our community development department did, and so if you're a new development in Tuolatin, part of the requirements are that you have to have electric vehicle infrastructure charging stations in your in your development. Advocate to ODOT, Metro, and/or other regional partners to bring corridor chargers to Tuolatin. This is also happening and happened as a part of the CFI grant. ODOT was the recipient of millions of dollars, I believe it's like $120 million, to bring chargers to the corridor. So that will be happening along with our our grant work. Update the TSP to increase use of active transportation options. Of course, two of you are on that community, TSP Community Advisory Committee, and know that the TSP will include an increase in the use of active transportation options. Update the TSP to increase the use of electric mobility, micro-mobility options. That's also a part of this ongoing work with, to update the TSP. Advocate for increased transit service, coverage, frequency, and safety. You know, that's ongoing. And then finally, increase micro-mobility access through programs like the E-Scooter Program in Tuolatin. So we currently have Lime, we're open to other franchises, and increasing the the access of ways to get around. Finally, the the final focus area is seven is consumption of foods and food and goods. So educate the community members about best practices for curbside composting to support the curbside composting program. The Republic put that curbside composting program in place last year. They will be before you, I believe, either the next meeting or the next one, to give you an update on that. That's an exciting, exciting program. I know I put my onions regularly in the curbside composting. Support Washington County's commercial and industrial composting program. So that, we also work with Washington County on this program, important program that they are the lead on with Republic Services. Participate in annual food waste prevention week educational campaign. That is always the month of April. It's a week in April. It's coming up April 7 through 13 in 2025, but we participated at this last year, communication and with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. Host and promote repair fairs. So our library has done a couple of repair fairs so far and have them on on tap for more. Those are exciting ways to not just reduce, reuse, and recycle, but the reuse part of it, the taking care of things that and not just throwing them away. And finally, expand the Library of Things to increase community access to minimal, minimal-use items. Jeriann has been before you before to talk about this, the, what a cool thing the Library of Things is, and they're constantly expanding that. I talked to Jeriann a couple of weeks ago about expansions for the Library of Things. So that is definitely in progress and ongoing. I know that's a lot. Phew. Okay. So the recommended 24, 26 Climate Action Work Plan before you that we're presenting tonight is a start. It is not a, it's not a finished document. It's not a, a, a finished line. It is a starting line, and there is a lot happening. Almost a quarter of the actions, so the, there are 146 actions, almost a quarter of them, so 33 are are touched by this work plan, and that includes the actions on the two-year work plan as well as actions on that are in progress or ongoing. That's not to say that all of those will be accomplished in two years, they, but they will be touched in two years, in this two-year timeframe. That includes four of the top 10 priority actions. As we described, two of those are in the buildings and energy use, and two of those are in the transportation. These actions touch seven, six of the seven focus areas in both adaptation and mitigation. So what are the next steps? As I described, we are moving forward with the CFI grant, so we're preparing all the necessary items to get a fully executed grant agreement. They, we've met with, we, the Nick part of we, and has held the kickoff meeting with our Federal Highway Administration. There's a lot of work on getting the project on all the relevant transportation improvement plans. We have to get it on the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Plan, the Metro Transportation Improvement Plan, as well as the Salem Kaiser Planning Area Improvement Plan. So we're working through all of that. We've attended a welcome webinars, and we're working with our HR team to finalize our recruitment materials. That grant authorization will come before you when it is ready. We don't have a date certain yet because that's still, still in progress. We're moving forward with a study to analyze options for program funding. I described this already, the, present options to council in Q1 of '25, anticipate hiring staff for the program next year. Action 8.1.10 suggests updating the plan regularly, and we would anticipate that, including an update of the emissions inventory that took place as a part of the development of the plan, to see the impact of the work, as well as to bring back annual progress reports. So we anticipate coming back with a progress report on the whole plan in July of '25, but we will be before you on a variety of actions, including the the CFI grant and others before that, but a progress update on the actual plan itself in '25. And with that, we don't have a resolution in front of you, so it'd be a voice vote if you decide to approve the Climate Action Work Plan. With that, happy to answer questions.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Brooks?
Well, first, I just want to say thanks to everybody that participated in the Climate Action Plan Development and the Work Plan Development. And it's super exciting getting the grant. So I've, I've expressed this, part of the issue that I have with some of this is about the strategic nature of the plan. And part of what is important when, for me, is having the baselines and the measures. We have the, I guess for me, part of it is the, the whole, the whole piece around, like for me, I'd like to see a graph, and that it would have what the actions are, kind of like why we prioritized it, what's tied to it. So for instance, if we're gonna reduce this much carbon so that we have a carbon measure, that's talked about several times, or if we're gonna take certain, if we're doing things for public transportation, how many cars are we taking off the road? Just those sort of concrete outcome measures so that, because a lot of this work is grant-funded. So my thing is, while I appreciate this group of actions, I think it's really important that we're illuminating this and that we're talking about where we are with progress. I still have a desire to utilize the the budget money that we allocated for Good Company to take what we're doing and put it in a spreadsheet and assess it for the environmental impacts and delineate that so that we have something that we can build on easily from that place. And I think that would help the future person who's going to be the coordinator get their arms around it from where we're starting from with the, with the anticipated outcomes and what, when we're expecting what, and what kind of measures we're looking at. And especially since part of it is setting up, integrating this in the, the future measures. So the whole thing with the five-year plan wasn't just like what the plan is, was also like the carbon measures every five years, and like, how are we making progress so that we can look at what we're doing well, what we learned, what new innovations are out there, what new news is out there? And part of it is like, I don't think that everybody on the city should be a climate expert, and so I think them taking an expertise, just like when we discussed the thing with, with opioid use of money, having somebody that has those strategies in mind and those collaborations built, I think even with this other contractor, that we have like the best possible starting places. I'm not saying that we would change anything because a lot of this, we're just illuminating what we're doing, but having the rationale built in, and then if there were suggestions or discussions about some stuff, they could give us, whoops, a little bit of a consult, consulting around it. To me, I'd like to hear it, and I'd love to hear a presentation about what what this plan is, just to inform me better about, like, just stepping in the right, stepping in the, starting off on the right foot, kind of thing, and being as more of the the most efficient and effective that we can be as a city. There's some of the strategies that I know I'm concerned about and other counselors are concerned about that are, seem to be priority. are concerned about that are, seem to be priorities to us because we're doing build-outs that there might be very small changes that could help our developments be greener. And we don't have that much to build out. So as we're doing it, just having, I would want somebody, if I was doing that in my house, somebody that's an expert saying, this is a great idea, go right ahead, and this is what you're gonna end up with doing it, or this might be better here, or something like that, just to get some feedback that way. Other than that, I want to say that I am excited that this is going on. One of the things too that I noticed, there's, and this was brought to me by a constituent, that we're rated as one of the hottest city in the, they did the, I don't know if you guys caught this, but they did the heat map of the state, I think it was, and let me see if I can find. Anyway, they did the heat map of the state in our region. Tuolton's the highest on the heat map. So the good company's gonna know that, but we're not necessarily gonna know that, right? And so we're in a place like that. And I just think that that's the one piece that's missing for me a little bit. It's just like I would go to a doctor for an assessment for an illness and just get some insight around where we're at, and then also building out the plan with what we expect to see with carbon reduction, or less cars on the road, or whatever actions we're going to. You know, less water, like what are we anticipating, what are we aiming for, and then how are we doing on that? And what could be some things that we're, we could share with other cities, like we did, with the other stuff that we did, with the electrification, and they're sharing with us. Because I think it's a, if we're gonna really make this difference, we have to have a collaborative approach, everybody working together, and to illuminate what's working the best, and we coordinate with that. Having all that information, I think, would be really important for the strategic part of the plan. So that's the part that, I don't have any problem with this as a work plan, but I don't think it's the strategic plan, even if it's a two-year plan, I'd like to have the insight from that. Does that make sense? Yeah? That's, that's...
Anyone else? Counselor Hulier?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very well thought out. And I guess, I guess I personally don't have any problem with doing the second before the first, as long as we're gonna do them both. And I think it comes from, unless I have a lack of understanding of what a 15, I would love to know what an impact, personally at the agency I work with, a 15 million, excuse me, dollar impact would be on my staff, but I just know that one $375,000 grant consumes the life of four people when, in reality, you think it's really just one. And I hear and respect everything Counselor Brooks said, and I'm thinking through it. And I also think through the reality of where we are with staff capacity right now, and what you've said is going on with Nick and with all the things. And we can't be experts. Thankfully, we have some people that can wear those placeholders for a little while. And so I'm just concerned that if we move into a place of continuing to plan more, that worries me. I think that we need to be able to take a deep breath and be able to really plan out this partnership well, because understanding, and I know that you're all, you know, have, we all have our different expertise, but I think we can all appreciate that a grant of this size or magnitude, it is just massive. And it goes into every department. It's in, we've heard it's in finance, it's in HR, it's like, it penetrates through an organization in order for us to do it properly. And the reporting requirements, you haven't even talked about the quarterly reporting requirements and the SMART goals that I'm sure that have to be in this to accomplish this, or they take away the money, right? Like, it isn't like you just get it. And so I guess, I feel like Sherilyn and your staff are the experts on what order you feel that you can digest this. And to me, if this is what you're coming to me as the expert in front of me, and that's where, I guess that's where I would lean. And it's not because I don't want a strategic plan, but I think if you can't put this one together, what we have together, put together some secure funding and sustainable things, looking through all the pieces that we have, and then go into the plan, because I don't think you're asking us, unless I'm not understanding correctly, to move, to just switch one and two, right? You're not asking us to not do, not hire a firm to facilitate the prioritization. You're just asking us to change that order. So the only question that I would have, sorry for going on, but is to, could you explain when you think, and maybe I missed that, and I apologize, when you think you would get to number one? Is that what's the spring of next year, you believe?
I think by this time next year, certainly, and probably before. It depends on getting a staff, some staff capacity. If we're able to get some staff capacity to help us manage a consultant that would, like Good Company, to put together a more strategic plan. I mean, I think that could have, if we're able to hire a staff next July or August, then we're, that would be one of the first things that that staff person would get to, is putting together a, working with the consultant and with us and the community to put together a strategic plan.
Can I clarify?
Counselor Brooks?
I want to clarify what I said, because I didn't say to add strategy to what we're doing, to add more items to what we're doing. I said to have experts to add rationale to what the plan is that's already delineated. So I don't want to see a separation from the execution of the plant, the plan that we, the concept of the plan, and then the action of the plan from two different places. I think that having that cohesiveness with Good Company coming in, taking a look at what we're doing, writing out the outcomes that are very clearly listed and what a work plan would be, and just having that oversight, not adding anything or subtracting anything, but if there was something that they wanted to, more of a consulting, like a real consulting kind of thing, not a work thing. And then if they had some input, that we could hear what the input is, not to change the work plan, but to be more informed. And I also think that it will help support the grant, because the CFI grant is a grant that is embedded in this plan. So to have the rationale and everything there, you can also, if there's additional money that we might need, or that would show up, or whatever, we would have the rationale there from that line of thinking, that would take actually time away from time that Nick wouldn't have to do certain things, that would actually add to it, we have it budget, and that would add to the expertise of what we're doing already. So I just don't want it to be confusing that I'm saying that we should change the plan, or that we have to have five years, or anything like that. I'm saying, let's have it developed in a way that has outcome measures and that they don't have to work on it, and that stays consistent with what we have with our goals.
Other questions? Okay, here we go. Well, first of all, this is very exciting, that we're moving forward with all these. So I think we're dealing with minutia in a way, but. So I'm trying to understand, like, we got this grant, and it, and it's also covering 16 other cities. So does money come out of this grant to cover staff to administer this? Because, you know, are we taking the hit for the staff cost, or is that part of that $15 million?
That's part of the $15 million.
Okay. So with our climate action plan outside of the CFI, are we looking for a separate person to just be like our climate action plan person?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm glad I'm understanding that now, because it was a little confusing.
Yes. The CFI grant does come with money for a staff person, and it's vastly needed.
Oh, yes.
Probably, we need more than one staff person.
I would believe that, yeah.
But anyway, at least we get one staff person. That is independent of the trying to identify a funding source that would pay for a climate action plan program manager.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. So then I'm on to, when you met with staff and came up with, you referred to top 10 action items, I mean, what were the criteria? That's where I'm lost. Like what, like, oh, this, I mean, they're all great, but what was used to make those decisions? What process was used, I guess?
We didn't use a formal prioritization process. We looked at what was realistic to look at, and leveraging consultants that we knew were coming on board, like the parks standards, the water conservation plan that we've had Jake work on, and we knew there was capacity to take that on, as well as interest from the council. So there was not a formal prioritization done. It was the managers of departments and divisions looking through the plan and saying, what can we accomplish in these, or what can we touch in these next two years?
Okay. We're close, Sherilyn. But I have to say that, like, when we had our last climate action plan committee meeting, we had this big discussion about how important, I mean, to me, I can only talk from my business perspective, but if you don't have a strategic plan and a vision, if we're not using these experts to determine what's very most important, I feel like we're just like shooting it, like we're plugging holes in the dike, and we're not, they're all great, they're all part of the, you know, solution, but I, we're not necessarily doing the most important things that will have the most effect. That's where I have a hard time with this. And I'm gonna lose my train of thought. I just, I think we're, I think everything's well intentioned, but, and I'm gonna use, when we did the Parks Master Plan, that matrix, it made it so easy, because we were weighing what's most effective, you know, and it also weighed, like, what's reasonable cost-wise, kind of like we do the transportation plan, but that's a guideline that we could go through, and we're still checking these off, but then we're gonna see results. So that's the only place where I'm a little hesitant here, because I think that's such a vital part of making sure, especially over the long term, that this is going to work correctly, like it should.
And I do not disagree with you at all, and that is one of the reasons why we're recommending a two-year Kickstarter plan as opposed to a five-year plan, so that we can gain capacity to do that kind of stuff. I don't have the capacity internally right now to put together that, or even really manage a consultant to do that for us. I, that is, that, it's a lift, it's a lift to even manage a consultant to do that work. The scoping that, the, so Good Company did provide us a proposal to do the work, and it's like $50,000, but it's incumbent on, I mean, it's a lot of internal staff meetings and work. And I feel like that having a staff person, a dedicated, like a program manager that can help us go through that prioritization process and work with a consultant that has a prioritization matrix, that we can do, find out what's most important and has the most impact. I don't disagree with you, Council President Pratt, that these items, they weren't plugged into a prioritization matrix. And I want to get there, I just...
Right. And I guess, like, for a specific example, as we, like, build out 124th at these commercial buildings, we might be missing an opportunity here to change our code, to make a lot more, you know, different things that could really affect the climate. And we might be missing that opportunity, and I get that staff is limited, and this is a challenge, but, yeah, it's frustrating. Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you. So thank you very much for putting all this information together. I agree with you. I think that we shouldn't rush into this. I believe that we have staff who know a little bit about what's going on in our city, and I think that we have an opportunity to fix first the low-hanging fruit that makes climate impact more sustainable, like trees, for example. We know that one acre of trees in Tuolton takes care of 14 people. We have approximately enough acreage in our own city to take care of our own population. So why don't we do that first on the trees? That's low-hanging fruit. That can take care of a lot of carbon that we're concerned about, electrification. I am not for electrification. I am for choice. I do support a lot of the climate action plans in my business, and I talk about it all the time here. I don't think we need a consultant. I think that, I know that we may not agree on all this, on both sides, which is fine, but there are things that we can do right now. So what's the rush? If we're gonna have the most impact, let's deal with our house first. Let's take care of the trees, let's take care of some of the irrigation stuff that we talked about, let's take care of some development codes, installing a SMART control. These are the things that we can do right now. We don't need a consultant for that. So I would be for giving you the two years, analyzing what's priority, and then taking each item one at a time. So that's what I would do. We have this huge grant right now that we're trying to make most of, and that's great. We'll make the use of it, all in due time with process and rely on our team. So I would be for this process. Take two years, let's figure out how this happens, and then we can go from there and refine as we go along the process, but I don't think we should rush into this.
Counselor Hulier? Sherilyn, thank you for sharing this information with us and coming before us to tell us how your staff feels and recommending, I think, great suggestions. I have worked with consultants before, and they do take a lot of time. So a lot of people think that they come in, they do all the work, they take up a lot of, they need someone, a point person, they need to answer questions, that person needs to go to meetings with them, that person needs to give them background information. I mean, it's a lot of work. And so I know how it feels that you need, when you hire a consultant, they're not, that doesn't mean that they're gonna do all the work, and you're just gonna sit there and wait till they come back and give you all this research that they did. That's not how it works. They really need, they really need someone. And so therefore, I am with you that you should hire someone on the, to help you with that, because I think that it's, it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of meetings and all that, that someone would have to, from the city, would have to provide, so they can make the good out of that. So I'm not against consultants. I think the consultants bring in a new perspective. They go out there and see cities, they see what other, best practices, what others are doing, similar to our city. We don't have the staff capacity, so I'm all supporting, in support of that. I'm also in support of switching things, like you say, you want to start. I think that you and your staff see this every day on a daily basis. You know how much you spend on staff time, and you want to maximize that, so I'm also in support of that. And, you know, a lot of us go about our days, but I think that you, you have tremendous staff and very well capable, and I trust you and a lot of decisions you've made. And so I think that I'm in favor with what you're requesting. And so I think that I'm in favor with what you're requesting here in this meeting. Thank you.
Just to clarify, I'm not recommending that we do nothing for 28 years of a 30-year action plan. It, like, this is a 30-year plan and I recognize that there are things that are happening now. Steve and his team brought forward their work plan a year ago and we're going to review that again. And like the climate-friendly equitable communities work is, is interwoven through here. There's just a lot of moving pieces that, that I think when we come back for an update in July of next year, there will be, there will be action and there will be progress. And I think that this plan shows progress. It doesn't have what you described, Counselor Brooks, or what you, you described, Counsel President Pratt, in terms of like going through a matrix, but I know we will get there.
I just, okay. Counselor Brooks, sorry. I don't understand how we go through matrix if we don't have a time that we're starting and a time that we're ending. So I don't know if this is a realistic thing for a consultant to do, but is there any way that the Good Company can look at what we're doing and help us with outcome measures and times? I'm just looking for measurables so that we can get the grants. I'm not looking for them to redesign anything. I'm looking for us starting off on a place that's on the, on the right foot as far as, as far as documentation and it would include the CFI grant, you know? It's just a matter of integrating it into, like, we caught a grant with this plan and then we don't have the, the plan really fully written. And I think that somebody from the Good Company could help us with just the, just the measures, just like finishing it up. I'm not looking for changing it or whatever, but we don't have outcome measures, we don't have times, we don't have any like discernible. And then, and then I would love to hear also what they think. Like, I would love to hear them come here and tell us, you know, like, we worked with them, we made this plan, we're doing some actions. I would like to hear them talk about, like, just where we're at, you know? Give us a, some feedback. I mean, they're going to be really excited that we got this grant. I don't think, I really am not, I just don't see why you wouldn't have measurables. So I, I'm not trying to ask for extra things, I'm just wanting us to have a touch point with Good Company, they're in our budget, let's, like, hear from them. And I don't think that you have to have them developing a plan or anything like that before getting the other consultant on board and working with staff, but at the same time, it's like, they can also help by looking at this, point out what the needs are for this position as well, because they're going to have a different lens and communication strategy because of the, the work that they've done on our plan so far with us. And they're an excellent organization compared to a lot of things that we've seen. I guess I feel really invested in it and I think that Counselor Pratt does too because we've been sitting on the Climate Action Committee, we've gone to the meetings and like other people that sit on committees. We would want people on this council to respect the perspective that we have, we have a little different insight into this process. And so I would just hope that people would trust us and our opinions about having a scientific method as we move forward on this so that we're just in our best position possible. And I think what this organization wants, what Sherilyn wants and what we all want is to have good outcomes, you know? I don't want people to be overworked and all that kind of stuff, but I'd like to see, I'd like to hear what, what they think and if they can, you know, throw in some outcome measures for us and make it measurable and have some, you know, just normal things that you would expect to have in a, in a business plan.
Counselor Reese, then Counselor Sacco.
I guess I'm not, I'm sorry, I apologize, it might be my, now I'm confused. I guess I'm not understanding what Counselor Brooks and Pratt and Brooks are suggesting or recommending and I think that will be, it will be helpful to me if you can tell me exactly what you want, because I read exactly what Sherilyn's, in order for me to make the, like, a decision of like, and think about this and process, because I read her clear understanding presentation and also her, her, the draft, the recommendations that they do in the executive summary, but I'm not understanding, I think you're speaking about something that we're not, I'm not involved or engaged in. So it'll be helpful.
Okay, let's, Counselor Sacco speak and then I'll try my best to explain.
I just had a question about, okay, so, so the, so the budget for 2425 is 125K and that's split up between hiring a firm for 50K for the prioritization development and then 75K for the firm to analyze and provide options for the sustainable funding strategy. So what I, what I don't understand is, I'm not opposed to Counselor Brooks's proposal, but you said there's budget for this, where would, like, how much would that cost and where would that come from?
We have that in the budget already.
So that's in the 50, in the five-year, the five-year plan, that would cover that?
No, this was this year's budget, that's the 125, or 100, yeah, 125.
So that's the five-year plan, but we're talking about, isn't this, this in addition to the five-year plan or what we're asking for?
No, we're asking, the whole idea of the five-year plan was a whole prioritization process that would come out with that five-year plan.
Okay, because what I, I guess what I heard you say is that this is what you're asking, or at least this is how I, how I interpreted it, is that you're asking for an analysis done for the two-year plan.
No.
She's, she, well, you're shaking her head no and she's shaking her head yes.
Oh, no, no, no. I don't think that would make a difference, in my opinion. It's, it's looking at.
It sounds like two different things, though, to me.
So when, when we did the Parks Master Plan and we did that whole thing where we looked at all the different, like, the 146 things in this instance, and we looked at it and we did a ranking and all that.
Yep.
Well, that's what needs to be done, whether it's two-year or five-year, to identify what are the most important things to work on first, just like our parks, which parks we, like, that's how Los Casitas came out of that.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah.
I agree with Counselor Pratt. I do think that it would be good for us to have a matrix and a prioritization with experts. I also understand that we have some limitations going on with the organization. So my thing, I was saying as a, as a compromise is, let's get in Good Company, it wouldn't be the same as their initial proposal. It would have been nice to have the proposal also presented to us, which we never got. And so what would it be to have them look at it and then just at least do the scientific measurables of what it is that we look like we're doing, maybe some suggestions, but just, just like a literal review consultant thing. I think that I'm with Counselor Pratt, we've been talking about this a lot, to do a five-year plan and to have it strategic versus highlight a checklist of everything that we're up to would be something that we budgeted for and that we asked for and that was directed by this council and that's not what we're getting today. So there's a disappointment with that. And I am just trying to make a compromised statement so that we could at least have a touch point with the Good Company. I don't want to lose the trajectory and I don't want to lose the measurables and I don't want to lose the opportunity of additional grant funding because we're not writing it out well. So, and then I would love to hear what they just would think for private, like, what do they think about what we've suggested? Is there anything that we're missing? Doesn't have to be that we change our plan or anything, but at least just hear from them, that's all.
So, can I, so, I guess, so to clarify, I still, it still sounds like additional work above the five-year plan to look at the two-year plan. I don't know, I mean, because creating a five-year plan seems like one thing and then we're asking them to look at this two-year plan and provide, so I don't know if that would be additional cost, I don't know. It sounds like additional time, so, because it's two separate asks, but I have no idea. It just sounds like, in my head, it seems like additional, an additional request. And then with the, I don't disagree with the matrix and the prioritization, but I also fear that takes time and then would we lose time and momentum in the two-year, in the two-year gap if we stop and then do this five-year? But I absolutely agree with the measurables, 1,000%, and having some, I mean, I think, I mean, we have to. But again, I don't know then if that sort of dips into this 50K. I don't know, but.
That's what the measure is for.
We would leave that 50K on the table because it's just for this year. So why wouldn't we use what we said we wanted to do to have all the insight that we could have from the Good Company that we could get? Not, if there's something that's more limited than we thought because of the CFI grant, fine, but add the measurables and suggestions and touch base with them. I don't want to not hear from them for two years.
Counselor Hugler.
I think we need to explain.
Thank you.
We'll come back to Maria if she's still not.
Thank you.
I'm still writing down things here.
Sherilyn, will you clarify for me, please? If, as part of hiring a firm to analyze and provide options for a sustainable funding strategy, would that then not prioritize the items? I mean, is there a way that these, that it can all happen in one or are these two different expertises and that's why they were separated out?
Oh, I think they're two different expertises, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're two different expertises.
Thank you.
So bad, Sherilyn, I'm sorry.
Can I just say something?
Go ahead.
I'm going to agree with Counselor Sacco on the measurables and all, and the outcomes, but I do, I still feel very confused. I think that the 125K, I feel like we're adding a step to this. I don't know, maybe I'm, I, that's what I'm seeing, like, the Good Company is a company, right? That, that you want to hire, there, we have budgeted 125, so from that 125, you want to pay the Good Company so they can do measurables and outcomes for us? Where, because I heard Sherilyn say that, that we will get there.
But.
Eventually, with.
Yeah, that, what I'm seeing issues, we budgeted that money for this year to do this, to come up with that. The problem is, what I'm hearing from Sherilyn, is with the CFI grant, it's complicated it and we have limited staff capacity. We, we, and if I'm understanding you correctly, you want to get there and do what we want, it's just you're delaying. And, and for background from Counselor Brooks and I, we proposed the climate action plan in 2020 and it's gotten delayed along the way, so we've got like underlying frustration to be totally, you know, upfront about it. So that's probably a little of where we're coming from. But in the end, the most important thing to me is that we're doing this measurable outcome type procedure that we're not just going, oh, this one's fun. I mean, they're all great, you know, but I don't know if they're the most effective and my only concern about the delay at this point is that what, what are we leaving off the tail? I mean, maybe the, I mean, the street trees are important, but maybe something else is much more important and can be much more effective over the next two years and we just don't know. We're just going, well, this is one we could do and maybe they're all the same things. We just don't know right now. That's what's hard about it for me. But, and then I, I have a lot of empathy because I know we have limited staff until we get the CFI person on and that's a big struggle too. So that's what I feel like we're weighing here. Counselor Brooks?
The other thing is, from the very, very beginning, when we first passed the, just even projecting the climate action plan, we always said that it would be evidence-based so that we'd have measurables. I mean, that was from the very beginning direction that we ever did when, before some of us were here on council. So it's been the direction from consistently over time, so then to have it absent on this just seems like, it doesn't make sense to me and especially when it can be done and we could just get help with it. So I think the prioritization is really important too. I'm willing to compromise, but the, but having them come talk to us about this, we have them in the budget, it's not adding an extra step, it's something that they were supposed to do in the first place. She's saying she's switching the two roles, the one and two, but if you look at what we're talking about, the 40, the 40 is for the Good Company, right? And then, can we look at the slide?
So there is $50,000 for Eco Northwest to look at, that's number two. It says 75,000 here, but we are re-scoping and the, I believe that the, it will come in around $50,000 for Eco Northwest to, to do this, provide options for sustainable funding strategy. And then that, that you did approve $125,000. It does sound like to me that there, that you're asking for an additional step, different than this, different than the hire a firm to facilitate prioritization and develop a five-year implementation plan. Sounds like what you're asking is to have potentially Good Company come in and, they weren't contracted for this in the first place, though. I, I, at least I don't understand that.
The proposal was from the Good Company because we had been working with them, so I don't see why we would ever change off the Good Company after we started this. Yeah.
Okay, so.
So, but that was, the proposal was from the Good Company and from Eco Northwest. They do this work traditionally together, it's collaborative. We've never seen the proposal, this council has not seen the proposal. And the, but the facilitate the prioritization and development of a five-year plan, $50,000, that was originally for Good Company when we discussed it during the budget meeting, just to be clear. The 75,000 was for Eco Northwest. The request for proposal went out, they responded, that's based on that work. So as far as this goes, we were supposed to get this information after the last Climate Action Committee meeting that we had and we never got it. And then everything kind of changed. But as far as why is it hard to touch base with the people that we worked with to do the plan and then have the action items just looked at and like look at measuring the carbon so that we are doing what we said that we would do in the very beginning and so that we have more measurables to be able to make our funding good? So to me, this whole thing, I mean, I think usually if we had had this conversation, we would hear, okay, we will do that, because this, this doesn't seem to be such a big thing to me. It was what this council directed and during the budget committee meeting. We directed it.
I remain confused. I'm sorry, I remain confused that, that, if you're, are you asking for Good Company to come in and, and review the, the, I'm sorry, you're shaking your head yes.
Yeah, the two-year plan and to see if there's anything that we're missing in the matrix that would be something, like, she was saying, I'm not asking for them to do the whole matrix, but I, I want to see the measurables going through and so that we have a foundation so then when we pick up the next three years, whenever we do that and we get the person, that we have a good start for them, you know? That we have date certain and that we have, what are we measuring?
So you're asking for Good Company to come in and look at this, including the, the CFI grant?
Yeah.
And create measurables for the CFI grant?
Well, the CFI grant might already have those measurables determined, I imagine, because we wrote a grant, there's going to be that information in there, but they could also collect that and put it into the business plan that we have for this, this strategic plan. So they would just formally document it and that way Nick doesn't have to do at least that part of it and also we, he can get a feedback loop about how he's doing as well. I mean, he's been championing this for a while and I'm sure that. I mean, he's been championing this for a while, and I'm sure that, that would be helpful. And the same with anybody that's working in parks. They've obviously taken a big lead step forward. You know, there's different departments that have really embraced this, and we, I'm sure they would be happy to hear from the consultants about it. I know they would.
I personally don't know, I mean, I'll do whatever the council gives direction for. I, it, I'm not sure that, I maintain that, that this plan before you, while not, while, while it doesn't include specific measurable outcomes that we can, we can go back and say, we achieved this many cars off the road. It does show progress. It is a kickstart, and it accommodates the CFI grant. And it allows us to come back and, with staff capacity, and do, do exactly that. I, I don't know why, I personally do not think that it is necessary, although I'll do what the council decides, to have good company come in and backcheck this plan that's going to be, that we're moving forward.
I'm not seeing it's back.
Excuse me, can I comment a little bit? I think it's being in one direction.
When Counselor Brooks has done, yes.
It's not about backchecking. I want to be really clear on that. It's about creating, creating a business plan with dates and outcome measures that we're measuring, because what we said was that we were doing a climate action plan that was based, evidence-based. So you can't have evidence-based work, and we can't do two years of random work that's not evidence-based and say that this is part of a climate action plan. As a matter of fact, I imagine since the CFI grant is part of our climate action plan, that those grantees would want to see that we're doing that. I mean, that's just practice, and I work with grants as a, as a, I mean, I'm a social scientist, but you can't just do work and not have evidence-based outcomes and not be doing malpractice. You have to show what you're doing to show that it's effective. And you see these kids sitting here, I mean, we owe it to what we're doing to do a decent job. I mean, they're sitting here for a reason.
Now Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. So I want to just make sure I understand, Shalyn, that there is still projects being, that are going towards the Climate Action Plan. I think you said about 33% of it in the next two years should be completed towards the greater outcome of having this climate action plan adopted. Is that right?
I said they were touched.
They'll be touched. So the Climate Action Plan is moving forward, okay? And that's great. You would know better than any one of us who's, who's in the system for a long time, who knows your capacity, your capabilities, your budgets, and how to best maximize this opportunity. And you've put your plan forward, and I agree. Can't force anything on, on this process. We gotta go through it, and I didn't, I didn't give that direction. I said no to the Climate Action Plan, so I can stay here and say, no, that direction didn't come from me. I, I want process. There is low hanging fruit we could do right now that you've addressed, and that's really good. But to sit here and go through this process all over again, rehash if, when you've already put your plan forward, it's good. I think it's the best thing that you feel that you need, and you can get it done, and I will support that.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Suckow.
I don't know if this is going to be helpful at all, to be honest. But I guess where I still stand is that, I think that, I do think that the measurable outcomes, the measurable, the measurables will be helpful. I still think that it's going to, it's going to be in addition to the 50,000 that was already, because we're, I still feel like we're asking them to do an additional thing. So it's going to take additional time. And regard, I know that the 50,000 is budgeted, I get that, but the 50,000 is budgeted for the five-year work plan. And I feel like this is an additional ask. So I think, I would like to know what that additional cost would be. I think we still need to do it, but I, I think that our budget might be stretched then. If we go, you know, if we do the, the five-year work plan, plus we're asking them to put together these measurables for this two-year work plan. Feels like something additional still. I'm not opposed to it. I just would like to know.
So my question is, if we don't do the, the work, the matrix, to get to the five-year plan this year, what happens to that money, that 50,000 dollars?
Well, it's a one-time.
So that money's gone, Kristin, is what the point is that Counselor Brooks was trying to make, I believe.
I mean, you could roll it forward into the '25, '26 budget year.
But you're saying two years from now is when we're going to do this work?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I, I suggested that the, the work of the, of Eco Northwest to look at a sustainable funding source would happen immediately. And then that would be brought forward next spring, and potentially a staff person hired in July of 2025, and work towards a, a five-year work plan. You could replace, you could replace the, the, have good company come in and look at the, look at the two-year work plan, develop, potentially develop prioritization and measures and outcomes. And that could replace, in this budget year, the, the work of the five-year work plan. It is a different, it is a different scope. And so I need to talk with them about that scope, and it's not prioritization of a, of a five-year work plan. It would be to look at what we've put together and give their consultant advice on, assessment on it.
Can I say something else, too? The other thing about it is that work would be done. So these items, no matter, because they would have maybe matrixed differently, but these items, they would have those measurables done. So that, that work would be done. They're not going to charge us the same amount for doing this as scoping a five-year plan. So it's not even going to be as much. It's just a touch point and just sharpening up our plan. That's all. It's a compromise.
So my, so my next question is, if we have them move forward with what you just outlined, Shalyn, like, what is the timeframe on that, and does that put any of these action items on hold?
I don't believe it would put any of these action items on hold. It's certainly not going to put the CFI on hold, and that's our biggest work plan at the moment. And I don't believe it'll put a hold on the other ones. And I, we're moving forward with the identifying the ongoing funding source. I, I think that's, in my mind, that's the top priority, just developing capacity to manage this program. So I can contact good company and talk to them about timeframe and scope, and see what that would cost and what timeframe they would have that in place. Yeah.
So going around sort of in a circle. We're, we're wanting them to, to do a touch, a touch point to make sure that the two-year plan, too, also encompasses the right, the right action items. But we're not going to change the action items, and we're still going to move forward with the action items. So, okay. You know where I'm going.
Yes, we're identifying from the action items that are already listed, what, what the outcomes are, the measures that they would, that would be easy, yeah, that would be easy to do, how it's evidence-based, what the best measures would be, and, and they know how to do that. Math or, you know, identify those items or whatever, and then also help us with, with dates. I mean, the, obviously, working with the organization, I don't want them to have our dates, but just to have dates there from, based on experience or whatever, they can collaborate on that. But you would just have a more finished piece right there that would be better for the CFI grant, and it would be more reasonable as far as a, a plan that's catching that giant grant when we're looked at as an organization doing this work. I have no problem with having these items that the staff feels that they can do. I have no problem with that. I just want to know where we're at when we're making these decisions. You know? Is it slowing down our plan? Are we going to hit the carbon by these, you know, it's just giving us the information. That's all. It's an assessment.
Any other comments, or?
I guess the only other comment that I'll make is that, I think we need the five-year plan. I don't think we need a two-year plan. I think we have a two-year plan, and it may have holes in it, but it's only going to have holes in it till next February. And, and so, I, I hear you and I, I understand, but I, if, if I heard Shalyn saying, we're going to wait two years to go out and do the five-year plan, then I, then I'd be concerned. But that's not what I'm hearing. We're going to have a, we're going to start a five-year plan, or, excuse me, we're going to be in a position, February or March of next year, for this, for the body here to be able to move that forward and then move forward, hiring someone else. Is that what I, is that the bottom line? So you're asking basically for six months?
A year.
A year.
Yeah.
Uh, so how, a year?
A staff person would be on July-ish of '25 to then move forward with a, the, a five-year, a plan. A five-year plan could very well, I mean, include, it's going to include the CFI grant.
Of course. It's got to.
We're, we're going to do that one way or the other.
And we all see how important having this plan is, because we wouldn't have this grant if we didn't have this plan. But again, I stick to, I think we need to take a deep breath. I do think we need to have a process. But I, I think, I still, I'm sorry, I still agree with, I don't disagree with any, any of what you're saying. I just think the timing that's being asked for is appropriate. I'm sorry.
Do you have any other comments?
I, I wouldn't think that we would not have a five-year plan after the person came on. I agree with, with Shalyn on, on all that. It's just about having our plan a touch place and having our plan more fully articulated. It will be better for us, for the grant, the people that are giving us the grant for the CFI. It could also position us for money if we need any money. And it just puts everything in an embedded way where we're doing measurable outcomes with the overall concept of what we're doing. So it's just like tightening up the, the, the. The catchers meant that we caught this grant with. I mean, that's how I think of it. But you can't do that with pieces missing. Nobody's, it's just, it's, and, and I would say, too, we're kind of in this situation because we didn't finish doing it. So we didn't have the staff projections. Now we caught this really early, and we're kind of scrambling. And for me, the answer is not to not complete, you know? Because we're just going to be scrambling in more ways. Anyway.
Just to clarify, the CFI grant is not contingent on the rest of the Climate Action Plan having, being prioritized, and?
Well, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about prioritization. I'm talking about having outcome measures and timelines.
And the CFI grant is not contingent on that either, on, on the, the rest of the action?
I'm not saying that it's contingent on it. I'm saying that part of the reason why they engage with us is because we had a Climate Action Plan. And if we're doing a, a work plan that's not strategic, it cuts our credibility. And that's just basic, because you do the plan before you do the actions, you know? And if you do an action, you say why you're doing the action and what you expect from it. I mean, that's just basic science. You can't just, it's like going to the doctor and not taking the temperature and saying you still need aspirin. You, you show what you're doing. So if we say we have a Climate Action Plan, but it's this loosey-goosey whatever it is, it's really a tick list. It's not a plan, you know, as far as a work plan. It's not strategic, is what I'm saying. Measurable, evidence-based.
Go ahead, Counselor Suckow.
Okay, so, so that creates a question for me. So within these, so within the work plan and all the areas that you listed off, so when we, so when, when we take action on one of these things, is, so for example, share, because this is what's on my screen right now, share emergency preparedness, resources, and a free, easy-to-access, da-da-da-da. So when staff, because staff's going to be doing all of these actions laid out in the, in the next two years, is staff going to report on and have measurable outcomes on each of these items as they do them?
Well, they're all individual projects. And so they all need to be scoped and, and produced, and have their own actions, I mean, their own outcomes and, and measures and reporting. And so we'll come, like, I don't have a tracking mechanism for these yet. Looking for a program manager to provide capacity to kind of work on this.
That's why I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
It would help our staff capacity.
So where are we at here? I mean, I agree with Counselor Brooks, but I, my whole concern was that we're going to move forward, and it sounds to me like you're talking about a year delay to get in.
On a five-year plan, on a?
Yeah, to get to that point where, but we aren't going to have, on these actions that have been decided, we're not going to really have a way to track the results of them and know what they've done, like.
Unless that can be done after the fact, but I doubt of that.
They're not supposed to do that.
Yeah.
It's a planning document.
So, please forgive me for asking this question.
No, we're trying to figure this out.
So why, why did we get a Climate Action Plan brought in front of us that wasn't just like the Parks Action Plan, that was one, two, three, four prioritized?
That's what.
Like, I don't, I, I mean, like, it, to me, you brought it incomplete, but how, that, how is that?
Sorry, that's, that's the next step that we're not doing right now.
That's not what she's saying.
Well, yeah, that's not what I'm hearing. I'm saying, I, I, then why did we pass the Climate Action Plan without any of this in it?
Because you, you pass the plan, and then the next step is to go through the prioritization process. That's, you pass the plan and say, oh, these are all great ideas. But then the next step is to come in and say, what do we need to do first? And what do we have money for, you know, to go through that process. That's the process that's being delayed right now, and that's what that money was for. But the offset that Shalyn, I'm hearing Shalyn say is that there's not staff capacity right now. So it's a bit of a compromise.
I mean, I, the, and I don't, I don't know, others might be able to speak more to this than I. The Climate Action Plan, the 146 actions, was always anticipated. It was, it was never brought forward as a prioritized document. It, it, it was always anticipated that many of the actions would need to be scoped, and there would be their own individual project. Ones in here that call for policy action, it's like the council would need to decide whether to take it up. And then, and then it, once the council decided to take up that action, then it would have its own community engagement process. It would have its own, it was maybe a steering committee to, to, to look at the action and to, not a steering committee, but like a, a, some kind of planning group to, to look at how to move that action forward. Many of these actions are, are multi-year, and so it, the adoption of the Climate Action Plan was never as a prioritized document. I know I'm just repeating myself. But it was anticipated in the next steps that, that.
I know I'm just repeating myself, but it was anticipated in the next steps that, that to, to do a, to do annual progress reports and to ident, to create a five-year work plan and update the plan every five years and pick projects that have high impact, but not ever to, as I understand it, not ever to take the whole document, all 146 item, action items, and weight them and prioritize them in, like, in total context of, against each other.
That's how I remember it, exactly what you just said.
Oh, no, no.
That's how I remember it. It was not all like 146, do them now. I remember that it was, some are going to take longer than others. I remember the, some are going to be now, you know, projects that are going to be able, but I don't remember it being like some, I, I guess that's, just like you just described it, that's how I remember it.
Okay, now...
Maybe, see, so this whole thing is confusing. So I don't know if we're going to, I'm ready to make any kind of decisions if it's all confusing.
So to come up with a five-year action plan, you need to go through all of those actions to determine which one should be included in that five-year plan. It's the whole document. It's not, oh, let's pick this and that one. It's look at everything. And that's how you make that determination of what's the priority, looking at different attributes, I guess, which is most, which is most, will have the best results, which we can afford. And you weigh all those factors to determine it, but you can't just, it doesn't matter if it's a multi-year thing. It might be something we need to start on right away and it's very impactful, like maybe something I'm building. So it does encompass the whole plan, but then it's drilling it down to what we should be doing in these next five years.
Yes, you said that much more articulately. I, I, yes. But there are some that are education, right? It's like creating a resource hub for, of, of education. It's some that the commu, the community members do themselves, like, that, I mean, we've listed some of the in-progress, ongoing ones that, that are, are just happening. It's like first aid or kits, you know, emergency kits. Like, I don't know that those are going to get prioritized in the, in the big scheme of things. It's like they're going to happen. But yes, taking the whole document and deciding and understanding which ones are, have the highest impact and which ones can be, can be tackled.
Go ahead.
I mean, when we talk about like the kits, that is an outcome measure of an item. So it's not about if we're going to prioritize that. It's on this two-year list, so it's been prioritized. And that's just a measure of education. So education, even though it seems fuzzier, social sciences, science is measured as well. So behavioral things, educational things, there's items, there's distributions, it shows how well you're doing your job. Are you doing it in just English? Are you doing it diverse? Doing this, it's like if we were going to do DEI work and we just said, "Well, we're just going to want to do it ourselves," and the consultants can sometimes be a pain in the neck and it's inconvenient to look at all the truth, and we're just going to do what we want to do. We don't care if it has really good outcomes or not. How good is that DEI program? So it's not just what's convenient for the organization. That's where it gets troubling. But to say that we can't have outcome measures for the ones that we're just self-selecting, even with that, and not at least have the consultants come in and go, "Hey, that's great." Or, "Have you thought about this one? And then this is what the measures would be typically, and this is what carbon reduction we anticipate seeing, and this is how it fits into this plan," that they helped craft. So they would know how to measure it and put it in with time, date certain. So I think that it's a great idea that we at least scope what it would cost to do that and how it could, you know?
To me, that, that would be a perfect example of something that might get weighted heavier just because it's very low cost and might be fairly effective. And it's, gosh, one of those low-hanging fruits that Counselor Gonzalez was talking about. So that would be, I would, you know, included in the five-year plan too. It's not just big projects. It's like, what, what can we do altogether out of this? So that's where, I am at, Counselor Reyes.
Sherilyn, quick, quick. So you, the wait, the delay is possibly just a year. That's still within the fiscal year of 25, which could be, we can, the funds are still going to be there. So those who are worried that the, what's going to happen with the funds, the funds end June 30th.
Well, they're not necessarily going to be. Will that get rolled forward or not?
We can roll.
We can roll.
Absolutely can roll it forward.
Been in, yeah. So I know it can be rolled, but it's still within the fiscal year. So the funds are going to be there. We, I mean, it's a year delay that may be a year. I mean, you're just kind of, it could happen sooner than that. I don't mind waiting for you to prepare and get more, not prepare, but, that's a wrong word, but be, I guess, gather the information or, or hire the person that you need to hire or work with your capacity, the staff capacity. I, I, I don't mind delaying it a little bit, I guess, that's my point.
Counselor Sacco.
So I don't know what the appropriate thing here to do is, a motion?
Well, I think we have two things going on.
Okay, so maybe I'll just summarize what, what I would like to make a motion. Okay. Is to approve the 20, the 24 to 26 Climate Action Plan, Work Plan, and ask that Sherilyn bring, or whomever, bring back to council a proposal of a, of what the, the scope of a consultant would be, cost, time, et cetera, to come back and give us, for the consultant to give us measurable out, measure, measures, outcomes, dates. Yes?
Either.
Okay.
Timelines, outcomes, measures that are evidence-based.
If we have them give us advice, are we going to change the plan though?
I think we'd have insight and the new director could have, could be...
A baseline.
Be ready to go. Like, they would have direction on the front end to be engaged with that. And the people that are currently working can know what we're kind of like voting up for.
And advice.
Yeah. Just giving us...
So it is your proposal that we move forward with what Sherilyn's proposed?
Correct.
With the understanding that that budget will be moved forward and that we will be working on that five-year strategic plan approximately a year from now?
Oh, that's not what I heard.
No?
That this plan is moved forward, as is, however, for Sherilyn to bring back to us the scope of the measure, the measures, the outcomes, the dates.
But what about the five-year?
For the two-year plan. Yeah.
But I just said that and was told no.
I don't think we're going to roll forward and are we, I mean, I, I think that this, again, I still think this is an additional, additional fund, so.
What I heard you say, Counselor Pratt, was that the, a one-year delay on the five-year implement, like a five-year strategic implementation plan.
To get started on that, you, now you're saying that's not going to happen?
I, I, I think those are two separate things, was what I was saying.
I'm confused now.
Okay, I think there's, I understood there's three, there's three things. One, move forward this plan.
Okay.
Two...
Come back.
Two, uh, come, let me just say it. Two, come back with, talk, go talk to Good Company and scope what it would, what this, what them to take a look at this, at this two-year plan, and provide what, what it would take to provide outcomes, measures, timelines, a more fully articulated out, two-year plan. And then three, continue to move forward with the development of a five-year implementation plan that would happen after we get staff on board.
Yes. Okay, but what's, I, I, we're really close. Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, I don't know what, after we get staff on board, is that three years from now? I mean, it's really vague. That's where I'm a little lost here. I'm really close, sorry.
Well, the council hasn't, hasn't approved this yet. So in terms of identifying a funding source that would pay for a staff person. But let's assume we identify a funding source, an ongoing funding source, that you approve, and then we use that money to hire a staff by this, by July of 25.
Okay.
And then that staff person would be capacity to move forward a five-year, a rolling five-year plan that, yes.
Okay, I think...
That's what I under, what I understand.
Okay, okay, I think we're there.
When we're talking about sharpening up the strategic plan, also any advice for, that would help the Eco Northwest, make sure that that position was really well-articulated and stuff, because they have a different view on that than Eco Northwest. So just any contributions that they have to, like, they would normally, but that's, anyway.
I'm sorry, I don't, my brain has lost...
Counselor Sacco, would you go back to your proposal?
Yeah.
Okay, and just, I do want to say too, before like we end this, that the staff, thank you so much for all the work that you did coming up with the two-year plan. I think it's very thoughtful and I think that everybody did the best with the resources available. So, okay, so I make a motion. Ready for that? Yeah, okay. I make a motion for the approval of the 24-26 Climate Action Plan, Work Plan, in addition, asking staff to scope the work of Good Company, providing measures, outcomes, timelines, and advice on our two-year plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can, we can just do a hand raise on this?
Can we do discussion?
Discussion, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. So by, so to clarify, so by, is our items number one and two on page two part of the 24-26? So you're saying that we're going to do them in the order, like, that we're going to do it in the order of two and one, and those monies will stay there, and then we're adding additional money that we haven't budgeted?
No.
For this potential scope?
No.
So we'll use, so we'll do number two first, the $75,000, and as part of, so you're replacing the five-year implementation with the exception. Thank you.
But that, I would assume that, I'm guess guessing that this is going to be a lot less scoped work, so...
Yeah.
The costs will be much less.
It will be.
And then I just want to clarify that that 24-25 budget includes the move towards that. Well, you've got it right there, so I'm good. So, any other discussion? How about you, Counselor Reyes?
I'm, I'm just totally lost. I, I mean, I, I don't know if I want to make a motion now for any, or like even approve or go forward. I'm just, it's just...
It's been seconded, so we have...
Well, I know, then it's, I'm going to just say I can't right now make a decision. I'm abstaining because it is just completely...
Got you, it's like, okay, any other discussion? We've been motioning in a second, it's, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we've got the majority. No, any opposed? Sorry. You're abstaining. Counselor Gonzalez, your vote? Okay.
And I abstain.
Yeah.
I will follow up with what I understand the direction to be. And I may need to review the tape. And I will follow up.
When you're a little earlier in the day.
I appreciate the direction. I'm sorry for the confusion. It's a big deal. It's a, it's a lot. So I thank you for your discussion and I wish it was easier.
Well, I want to thank everybody from staff, Sherilyn. We've had a lot of discussions behind the scene and everybody here for having some of the discourse and going, this is a difficult one.
It is.
And we're all trying to do, it's a great thing we're doing, no matter how difficult it is. Counselor Fillion, you had a comment?
I do, I think it's important that we point out this is, compromise is how government should work and the civil discourse, and especially since we have youth here, I think it's important. And that if they ever volunteer on a city committee, they know that what they are bringing forward to the council is going to be heard and valued. Thank you.
It's advanced high school debate. Anyway, thank you, everybody. And now we are up to items we move consent, from consent to gender. There weren't any, any additional council communications?
Oh, can I say one? I forgot to mention, I did go to an IPM, Integrated Pest Management System training by the Bee City USA people. And it was really interesting. All of their Bee City information is available on YouTube, so anybody that wants to learn more about responsible pest management, insecticides, just bees in general, take a look at the YouTube channel for Bee City USA or the Xerxes channel. Thanks.
All right. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
That'll be unanimous, right?